Call this evening's planning commission meeting. The city agree to order. If there's anyone present on the commission that would need to disqualify themselves from the cases being reviewed this evening, please state your name and case for the record and complete a recusal form from staff. At this point in time, we will now take, receive the minutes from last month's meeting on August 19th, 2024. Just everybody's review those.
We're to approve.
Second.
All right.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Serna?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. All right, we will now move forward with the public hearing portion of our meeting. During this time, we will open and close a public hearing for each request. We will start with the staff giving the basic information for the requests and the applicant presenting their request. Afterwards, anyone wishing to speak for or against requests will have the opportunity to do so. All speakers should come to the podium to make their comments, beginning with their name and address. If you have not already signed in, please speak with staff so you can. We ask that everyone, everyone that speaks during this public hearing keep their comments to three minutes or less. This is to keep the moving, the meeting moving smoothly. If your concerns have been addressed by a previous speaker, please refrain from speaking about the same point repeatedly. We welcome all concerns in order to keep the meeting flowing in a timely manner. We may request new information being presented if at some point there's made by multiple speakers. You may also wish to elect the person, the spokesperson, to speak for your group. At this point in time, we will listen or hear the impact fee resolution. So at this time, we will open the public hearing for the impact fee resolution. Staff, please provide the basic information for this request.
Yes, so this is a consideration for the resolution related to impact fee study and implementation. Tischler Bice is the consultant that was contracted to complete the impact fee study. They have completed impact fee studies for jurisdictions across South Carolina. Impact fees are a one-time payment designed to offset new developments' impact on infrastructure. It's not a tax, and the money is kept separate from the general fund. Fee is a fixed cost that covers the direct and indirect cost related to the service that it covers. The impact fee study must show the need for the fee, that the benefit is citywide, and that the fee must be proportional to the impact created, which is why there are different fees for different developments. In South Carolina, the Development Impact Fee Act authorizes local impact fees and regulates them. Regulations include the ones shown here. Tischler Bice has projected residential and non-residential growth in the city over the next 10 years. Here are the population and housing unit growth projections for residential units. Here are the non-residential projections for the number of jobs and the increase in floor area over the next 10 years. And here are the maximum supportable fees as determined by Tischler Bice for residential and non-residential projects. That completes my presentation.
Will the applicant please come to the podium and present their request?
Chairman, Planning Commission, Andy Merriman, City Administrator, thank you very much for your time. I also want to kind of go off script real quick and just thank you for your service. Y'all are a volunteer body, and you do a great service to the city, especially during a public hearing format. It's a lot to ask, so thank you very much. I believe Heather articulated very well where we are with this. I want you to understand more than anything, your role in the impact fee process as it pertains to the state code. The state sees the impact fee process as a land use regulation, even though it is financial in nature. So therefore, we treat it like we would the comprehensive plan through that process. We do a 30-day public hearing notice, and therefore, we're here in front of you today with a resolution effectively recommending the impact fee, both the study and the recommended fee, to council. Council had to send it to Planning Commission. Planning Commission then takes the study in and of itself, considers it as you deem appropriate, and then council will give it second and final reading at their next meeting based on a lot of what we hear today. And I am here for any questions. Ashley, is that appropriate here now to take questions? Are we going to?
Typically, we do it during new business.
That's what I thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nobody currently has signed up to speak on our behalf of this? Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak for against this subject matter?
Just a quick question.
Sir, could you come to the podium, please? State your name and address.
Sure.
Ben Griffith, 610 Trevor Court, Greer. Just really quick, this impact fee, is this a fee that a company that is starting a new project has to pay for that project? How does that, so that's what that is? This isn't a, like a new tax on?
I think we will have an extra portion during the...
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's the question.
First question.
Okay, that's all, yeah, thank you, appreciate it.
Can you please fill out your name and address?
Sure, can.
Thank you.
I'm already on the sheet, so you got to differentiate.
Are you? Okay, perfect. Thanks.
That's a good question, and any other questions like that? This is the time to ask those questions, and when we open up new business, that's when we can discuss this.
And then PowerPoint, is that going to be available?
Yes.
Look at?
It will.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for the impact fee resolution. We now open up the public hearing for RZ 24-09. Staff?
This is case number RZ 24-09. The address is 711 North Main Street. The parcel ID number for the record is G018000400800. The existing zoning is suburban neighborhood, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Here's the aerial of the site. Here's the zoning map. The zoning of the parcel is suburban neighborhood. The green across the street is traditional neighborhood, and the pink is commercial corridor. The future land use is traditional neighborhood. And here is a photo of existing conditions at the site. That completes my presentation.
Thank you. Will the applicant, is applicant present?
I didn't sign it out there. The officer told me I didn't need to sign it.
You do not, that's okay. As the...
Okay.
Okay, my name is Hal Dillard. Address is 101 Sugar Mill Road, Greer. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I appreciate the work and all the help the staff has given us on this so far. Our interest in it is having it rezoned to the traditional, to be able to build two single-family homes on the property instead of one. To be quite honest with you, if we are not allowed to build the two, then we have no interest in the property. But I'll be glad to answer any questions.
We'll have the...
No que, oh, okay. Never been to your career.
Everybody's different.
Questions are called during the business meeting?
Yes. We don't have anybody currently signed up for this RZ 24-09. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for against this subject? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for RZ 24-09. This time, we will open the public hearing for RZ 24-10. Staff?
This is case number RZ 24-010. It is for five different parcels. All of the addresses are on Brockman-McClyman, 945, 788, 780, 784, and 792 Brockman-McClyman Road. The parcel ID number is 5-28-00-012.00. The last two numbers of the remaining parcel numbers are .01, .02, .03, and .04. The existing zoning is rural residential, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Here's the aerial of the site. The subject parcel is currently zoned rural residential. The blue and teal parcels to the north are manufacturing and logistics. The orange parcels to the south are DRD, and the subdivision to the west is traditional neighborhood. Any unshaded parcels are unzoned Spartanburg County. The future land use is mixed employment. And here is a photo of current conditions at the site. That completes my presentation.
Applicant present?
My name is Dave Craig. I'm at 430 North Hanover Street, Charleston, South Carolina. So I have just a quick presentation to get you all familiar with us and what we're proposing here on Abner Creek Road. I'm a project manager with Material Capital Partners. We're a developer based in Charleston. We've got over three decades of experience in developing single-family communities. Next slide. Go to the next one, please. So just briefly, this is our architecture for some of the units we build. We kind of, we have the same home builder that we use in every community we build. They do all of our product across the southeast. We do two, three, four bedrooms, try to have two-car garages in all units, front porches, and private yards. And we try to fence in all of our yards. These are the interiors. This is a project that we are building in Bluffton right now. These were designed by an architect. We would use these same interiors for what we are building here. And these are some renderings of what we build. These are the same floor plans you had seen previously. We like to emphasize pocket parks, walking trails, amenities. We'll have a clubhouse and a pool. We'll have a dog park here. We'll have walking trails connecting all of those. What we are not is kind of a production-style home builder. We like to do stuff in what we call a new urbanist-style design. So a local example is Homestead at Hartness, and we're working with the same land planner that did that project as our project, to keep you an idea of what we typically build. This example, the picture on the right is Homestead at Hartness, and on the left are a few different amenities that we incorporate in our projects. And that's it. Happy to answer questions later. We have not completed a traffic analysis yet, as we wanted to see what was happening with the property across the street before we engage with our traffic analysis group. During the permitting process, we will work with DOT and incorporate whatever they make us do on the street improvements between Abner Creek and Brockman-McClyman. So that's it. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer questions later on.
We've got to know where people signed up to speak on this matter, so I will call the now Amy Harvey.
Good evening. My name is Amy Harvey, and I reside at 788 Brockman-McClyman Road. I am also representing the remainder of my family, which live at 780, 784, 792, and 945 Brockman-McClyman. We respectfully request a rezoning of our property from its current agricultural residential classification to a traditional family zoning. While valuable for farming or cultification, this no longer aligns with the growing area's needs. We have lived within a five-mile radius of where we currently live our entire lives, whether it be at the corner of 14 and 85, or actually exactly where BMW sits now. We have owned this property for 26 years, so we've watched a lot of growth and a lot of changes over our lifetimes. As a family, we have decided to relocate where our type of lifestyle is still feasible for us. This is a very difficult decision for us, and it took us many knocks on our front door to make it. When you talk about rezoning, the question is, what are the benefits? Obviously, much-needed housing due to the constant growth in the area, along with maintaining the current community character. The traditional zoning aligns with the existing character of the surrounding neighborhoods and provides a welcoming environment for new and existing residents. We understand that rezoning sometimes raises concerns like traffic or noise. Trust me, we wait at the end of our driveway like everyone else does. With the exit route for Interstate 85 being close to Brockman-McClyman now, you will never avoid traffic when things are behind, no matter what stands on that property. As far as noise and all the dump trucks, the rock quarry was, has been located there for 50-plus years, so those dump trucks have been working those roads for a while now. I just want to assure the council and our neighbors that any development on our property will be done thoughtfully and in compliance with city regulations. They aim to create a residential space that complements the community's character and standards. We respectfully request your consideration and support for this rezoning proposal. Thank you.
Ben Griffith?
So again, Ben Griffith, I live at 610 Trevor Court, so I'm in Heartland Place, right, right kind of across the street. And could you bring up the map again really quick? So, yeah, that's either one of those, they're fine. So I am in favor of this. Of course, I would much rather look at a beautiful field of grass than a townhomes, but progress is progress, and sooner or later, you're going to have, and you had to pick your poison, and I'd rather have this than a warehouse or a Dollar General sitting there, obviously. So my only thing I would like to just impress upon you is this neighborhood here, this neighborhood right here, and that neighborhood right there, have all, have all been put in place within the last three years, and it has created exponential traffic in the area. And adding another set of homes here are going to make that even worse. I mean, I come down Abner Creek on a regular basis and have 18-wheeler or a dump truck on my side of the road, and the road is cracking, and it's just not wide enough. So I guess the point I'm trying to get to here is, I would really, really like for the council to require some sort, before you approve this, require some sort of a thorough traffic analysis, especially of Abner Creek from Westmoreland up to that intersection, because that's really where it is, and look into some sort of subsidized widening of the road or something like that, because there's just not enough, and possibly even a light being put at this intersection at some point. Because Abner Creek and Brockman-McClyman barely can sustain the traffic. Sometimes, I've been living here for 10 years, and there's never more than one or two cars at that intersection, and now it's backed up five cars, 10 cars. Either way, you get down to the end of Westmoreland by the hospital, and you come around the corner, and there's 15 cars lined up. So I just would urge you to take the traffic and the road conditions of this into consideration before you, before you make this final decision. That's all I'd ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else signed up? Maybe Lisa Timms?
Hello, I'm Lisa Timms. I live at 1028 Abner Creek Road in Greer, and I appreciate you hearing what I have to say, and appreciate the decision too by the city not to have warehouses at that corner. We, we live right near that corner, and we hear backup beeping regularly just about every night of the week, at least the work, work nights of the week, at 2:00 AM with the doors closed, with the windows closed, and with the TV on. You can hear the backup beeping, so we certainly don't need anymore. It doesn't work to mix industrial and residential. I just want to say, my husband and I have lived in the area for 35 years. I don't own property in Greer, and I don't have to be at work at a particular time. I have a special-needs child. I'm at work 24/7 at home, so those are not my issues. Repeatedly, I've been here before you and before the council, pleading for the safety of our area. And we, we have some real issues that have already been mentioned that are not like the other traffic issues that exist in the Greenville-Spartanburg area. I know there's a lot of traffic issues, but we do have a very unique situation. The, I know that the quarry has been there a long time, but now with all the development, those trucks run up and down the road just constantly. Our house shakes like an earthquake when they go down the road, and, and it creaks. I mean, it, those are heavy, and they really make a difference. They are cracking the road. Please go fact-check me if you want to. There are cracks all up and down that area. And I know that's not your problem, it's a Spartanburg County problem. And I also realize that there's other areas that aren't being addressed by Spartanburg County. One is the safety, the safety siren. I've written so many letters about that, trying to get that to be changed. Nobody's fixed that siren in like 15 years. And in addition, the ambulance issue, the safe, the people that we need to be at our homes if there's an emergency, and we've had many emergencies in the area, those people have to be able to get through that intersection. And already, there's a huge issue with us not being staffed at, at the fire station right there by that property. I was told by a worker once that there were six nights in a row, there was nobody there, and, and lots of other times when there's nobody there to cover that. Again, that's not your problem, but, but please take all of this into consideration, that we're on the edge of the county, and our needs aren't being met by the county. So we need you to consider that when you make your decisions. We have, that, that fire station, as far as the ambulance is, cover from Highway 80 to Reedville Road, but they can be dispatched anywhere if they are the closest unit available. So they need to be able to get through that intersection in a timely way. And what they're saying about the traffic backing up, it can back up all the way to the interstate. The 18-wheelers, when 85 is backed up, and you know how frequently that happens, the 18-wheelers come over onto Abner Creek Road, because they can zip from 14 all the way to 290, and that covers, you know, a large area where there could be an accident. They get on, and they are, they're tearing up the roads, and they're dangerous. And Abner Creek Road, if y'all aren't familiar with it, it's like, in area, in the area near the hospital, it's like a mountain road. There's curves, and there's incline. And so you've got, you've got the gravel trucks, you've got the 18-wheelers. I'm trying to say it's very different than just your average situation. And I'm, I'm asking, please, respectfully, that this be zoned suburban neighborhood, which would only allow four, four units per acre. That is still pretty dense. When they put up the map for the subdivision right behind our house, Bynes Creek, the whole room gasped. That's four units per acre, and the whole room gasped because it was so close, that the units were so close to one another. Scott Gillespie even addressed the gasp because the whole room gasped. So that's still a lot of people there. But I'm saying, I, I want my neighbors to be able to sell their property. I love my neighbors, I want the best for them. But we need to consider what's already going on in that area, and I'm pleading for the safety of the people. I don't think a turn lane's going to help the problem. I talked to somebody that's been in emergency work.
Three minutes.
Okay. And, and they're up? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Nobody else has signed up? Is there anybody else in the room that's wanting to speak for against this subject matter? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing for RZ 24-10. At this time, we will open up the public hearing for RZ 24-11.
This is case RZ 24-11. The address is 107 Cannon Street. The parcel ID number for the record is G021000100900. The existing zoning is commercial corridor, and the request is to rezone to Greer Station. Here's the aerial of the property. Here's the current zoning map. The zoning of the subject parcel is commercial corridor, and the light pink zoning surrounding it is Greer Station downtown. The future land use is downtown living. And here is a photo of existing conditions at the site. That completes my presentation.
Thank you. Is applicant present?
My name is Taft Worthlin, 107 Crowndale Drive, Taylors. Ashley, did, were there more pictures of?
Yeah, do you want to?
Yeah, sure. So we're asking for the rezone in order to incorporate the parking lot, or use part of the parking lot for outdoor entertainment, outdoor dining, some covered and some uncovered. I was the builder and designer of Von's Warehouse and operated Von's Warehouse in Simpsonville, so very similar design in that we incorporate restaurants inside and entertainment outside, using, utilizing half of the parking lot for space. Overall, about 600 chairs in, between the inside and the outside. And I can answer any questions?
Thank you. We have a couple of people signed up to speak on behalf of this. Phil Durham. Britt Jones. Anybody else in the room? Speak for against RZ 24-11. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for RZ 24-11. At this point, we will open up the new business aspect of the meeting. This is where staff will make an official recommendation on each item. If the commission has questions of the applicant's staff, or anyone in the audience, is within their right to ask such questions. The board will vote on each request during this time. After the commission has voted on your case, please contact planning and zoning staff at your convenience to move forward with the next steps. You may be excused from the meeting after your case is complete. All right, so at this point in time, we will look at the impact resolution, open up the business meeting for the impact resolution, impact fee resolution. Staff, will you provide your analysis and recommendations?
So we actually didn't provide a recommendation because this is a resolution. I, we have the same presentation, so I would ask that Mr. Merriman approaches again, answers any questions.
All right. So at this point in time, discussion, questions, comments?
I was gonna say, can you, can you further explain where the, where the money goes, right? So somebody comes and builds a neighborhood, it was $3,000 to $5,000 a unit. What, does that money go back into the city for development as an impact fee, or where does that?
So when you do an impact, when an impact fee is passed in a municipality in South Carolina, the funds that are collected on behalf of the development have to go to a specific use. So a study has to be completed, a capital improvement study has to be completed, that justifies the implementation of the fee, and then, of course, the study justifies the fee itself. So when those fees are collected, they, and in this particular case, we've set up four different accounts. Those fees go into those accounts. In this particular case, we've got fire, police, public safety, and parks and recreation. And every time a fee is collected, it goes proportionally into each one of those accounts, and they can be used on a specified list of, of capital improvements that are identified in the study that was initially completed. So it doesn't get dumped into the general fund. It's not just used for salaries or anything else. It can't go to maintenance, it can't go to operations. It's specific to capital improvements.
And each study is project-specific?
Each study is project...
So development comes forward, a study is performed, and then it...
Development comes forward, the study's already done, so in this particular case, the developer would pay the fee when the building permit is, is, is applied for.
So the fee gets, you accept the fee at the building permit aspect of the project?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So it's not, it's not, from a pro forma standpoint, the developer's not obligated to pay it. It's when the, when the, when the...
It's a little different than an exation fee?
Yes, sir. The annexation fee is different. In this particular case, and I'm glad you brought that up, there is a big difference between the two. The impact fee itself is paid at the permit time.
And I think there was the question about who pays that, so...
So yes, who pays for anything? And I guess that's the best way of putting it. But in this particular case, I think the developer would come in and pay the impact fee at the permit, and of course, the argument's always going to be made, well, it's passed on to the consumer. Well, that's true with the fees you pay with our development permits anyway. The impact fee itself, though, is specifically set aside to accomplish certain financial obligations.
Right. Yeah, just to clear that up, no, it's not the residents, it's not, you know, people who are spending money in Greer, it's the developers that come in and propose new subdivisions, and, and that's, that's it.
It's not a tax. It is not a tax.
So the, but it's actually the contractor of the building permit, not necessarily the developer of the lots? Who's ever pulling the building permit?
Whoever pulls the permit pays the impact fee.
So if the person is a resident, and they decide they want to build a single home, and they already reside in Greer, will they be subject to the...
They're subject to the impact fee. Yes, ma'am. So if, if you live in Greer and you're going to build on a lot, there is an impact, and that impact will be paid at that time. Yes, ma'am.
So what's the difference between police and public safety?
So in this particular case, the public safety fee that was in there is predicated on a pro, a specific project-based approach, and that is based on the public safety training facility that we intend to build and break ground on on Hood Road, which... facility that we intend to build and break ground on, on Hood Road, which is for both police and fire on that particular piece of property.
Because, you know, not that that's going to change anything, but I think the police are getting short-changed in this deal.
Well, it's an interesting approach, and it's very scientific in the way that it was done, but it's based on what I would argue, the considerably conservative population growth numbers. However, I would, from an impact fee standpoint, I would encourage the conservative approach to doing that. But yeah, you would like to see more money go to police, but that particular, that particular use is, it's just, it doesn't fall that way on the, through the impact fee ordinance, or the study.
The regular laws, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
So, if it's tied to the building permit, does this just apply to brand-new buildings? Or, okay, so not if a resident comes and wants to get a building permit to add a bedroom under their house or something? Do they have to pay a impact fee?
No, because the philosophy behind the impact fee is that this new development is coming in, in this particular case, this house, and these four people that live in this home, this family, is impacting the system in such a way that it warrants an immediate response, okay? An existing piece of property, an existing residential development, or an existing residential lot where you live, if you're going to expand and add a bedroom, the impact is already there. You're not adding people, you're not adding lots, you're not adding anything else, you're just expanding the footprint of your home. You will be, you will have to obviously pay the building permit fee, but that's completely separate.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I ask a question? Can we ask questions?
That's up to the chair.
You, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I was going to ask a question, Jeffrey, but I didn't know what it was.
For the record, one at a time, let's come to the podium.
You come to the podium and ask the questions, please. Just so everybody can hear you. Just state your name and...
Yeah, sure. Ben Griffin, Trevor Court, Greer. So, when we're talking about an impact fee, this is a, whether you want to say it or not, it's a tax, right? Every single person who buys a house is going to pay an extra $5,000. The developer's not going to eat $5,000. If they buy, if they sell a house, that would, $250,000 is now going to be $255,234. They are going to pass that on. Nobody's just going to eat that cost. So, they are going to cast, so it is, whether you want to say it or not, it is a form of a tax. I would say that in a time right now, when housing is less and less affordable every single day, and does not look like it's going to be becoming any more affordable in the near future, adding $5,000 to every house that's built in Greer is not a sustainable idea. As far as the impact goes, the argument here is that you're adding $5,000 that goes into a fund because you're impacting the area, and now that you need more police, and you need more fire, and all that kind of stuff, which is reasonable, but that's what taxes are for. Every single time a person buys a new lot, and they build a new house, they pay additional taxes. And that's, those taxes go towards more firemen, and more police, and more ambulances, and more parks, right? So, I'm not sure where that comes in, but I guess my biggest thing I'll say is, again, with housing prices the way they are, this is going to get passed on the consumer. No one's going to eat this, and every house is going to be $5,000 more expensive. Does anyone disagree with that?
I do see where you're coming from, but I would also say that the fees going towards fire, the police, the other two, the public safety and the parks and rec.
Of course.
Those are going to be funded anyway. They need to be funded. If we don't have an impact fee, the residents will pay for it. So, existing residents, exactly. So, with people moving into this area, and, you know, you can probably throw a rock outside and hit 10 people who are new to Greer. Those folks who are coming into Greer, I think the growth should fund the growth, if that makes sense.
Right, but wouldn't you, I mean, Greer's been growing for years, and there's never been an impact fee because the growth...
We're late to the party.
Is this something, all right, so I'll ask you, is this something that you're seeing done in other communities?
Absolutely.
I think I showed a slide where I guess it was probably what, 20 or so communities where it's also being done.
Okay.
And I think actually, there were some, actually, school districts that actually have an impact fee associated with it.
But I think we're eating up the three minutes.
Oh, yeah, no, that was my only concern, is that just, it is going to raise the prices of homes, and if that's, you know, and price is already high, so that's all I had.
I understand, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Andy, you might want to...
Rebuttal some of that, yeah.
Well, so, he's right. I would argue with the tax portion of it, because it's not a tax, it's a fee, not unlike when you pay a decal fee when you go to the DMV. I will say this, it is a regressive fee, inasmuch as it's not tied to the value of the home, it's tied to the specific impact. And the impact is treated equally across the board. And that's why the fee is set in the way it is, is because it's an equal assumption of impact. So, for the existing resident that lives in Greer, they are not subject to this. It is all new development, both commercial and residential. The other side of the coin is this, is that the, yes, this is, we are very late to the party. We are very late to the party. When I was the deputy county manager in York County, we did pass the impact fees in York County on behalf of the Fort Mill schools at $18,000 per single-family home. It was a little over 12 for single-family, or excuse me, for multifamily. The town of Central, Little Old Central here in South Carolina has passed impact fees, and they're charging somewhere between $3,000 and $4,000 for those impact fees. As far as affordability goes, I don't think, and this is my, again, I'm going to editorialize a little bit, that we can't lay affordability at the feet of impact fees in South Carolina. We have a, we have a housing shortage, and we have our own police and firefighters that have a hard time finding housing in South Carolina. When you, in Greer in particular, when you've got people that can come in and put $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 above asking price, and you're pricing them out of the market. At a $300,000 home, a $5,000 impact fee on a 30-year fixed mortgage over that amount of time is going to be about an extra $14 per month. And I'm assuming no escrow, I'm assuming no insurance, and no interest rate on that $300,000. From a down payment standpoint, we'll use the $300,000 again, I mean, a 20% down payment, $60,000. You add the extra $5,200, we're talking $61,000 down payment, a difference of $1,000. So, yeah, it will be passed on because that's the nature of how this goes, but it gives us the ability to jumpstart the necessary projects, so we're not waiting for the money to come in to then put in place these projects that we know the community needs immediately.
Is there an identified list of projects?
There are, there are. Well, yes, there are. Some of the money that's collected in the impact fees will go to the four Greer projects. That is the police and fire, the public safety training facility on Hood Road, the new fire station that's going north of town on the Gross Meadows, the sports and event center, and the parking garage, just to name, well, actually, the garage is not eligible for the impact fee, but those other three are. But that also, these dollars go to the acquisition of park space, okay? It goes to the acquisition of fire trucks, and I'll just kind of give you an idea of what it takes to buy a fire truck anymore. They're running about $1 million apiece just for an engine, and we're looking at a 36-to-42 month lead time just to get them built and delivered, okay? So, we have to be preparing and paying for these things well in advance because of the amount of time it takes to get them completed. In the meantime, people continue to move to Greer, people continue to move to Greer. Ashley can probably confirm this, but we are right now at our third-highest year in building permits, or in new housing starts, in the last 10. So, despite interest rates issues, despite affordability, despite all these things, we are getting more and more people moving here to Greer.
We'll see if you can, if I can ask this question right, but as we have these meetings, and as we have comments on the growth in Greer, and we've got, you know, bad roads, and too many apartments, and too many townhomes, and too many new permits being pulled, what do you think this will do to the speed of the growth in Greer? Do you think it'll impact new developments? Do you think it'll slow or control outside developers from coming in? Or do you think it will just aid?
My honest opinion, my honest opinion, sir, is that it will just, it will fund the necessary improvements.
It's not going to stop people from coming to Greer and buying land and doing the development.
It's not a regulation.
It's not. There comes a point where the fee is onerous, and you see some, especially out west, you see some in the $40,000 to $50,000 a pop for these impact fees. Yes, there's an economy, a scale, that needs to be considered. In this particular case, I think we've got a very conservative, reasonable number that's based on the market, and it will do nothing to slow growth. It will just, they'll just roll right into it. I mean, at $18,000 a single-family lot in Fort Mill, it did nothing, and this was six years ago that we, that that was passed.
What about, like, with Public Works, as far as any money associated with that? I mean, I know we get a lot of questions, you know, this taxpayer doesn't want to pay for these new roads to be maintained and all that stuff, and we got, obviously, we, the last 10 years, we've accrued a lot of infrastructure, with our storm drainage, where there's roads, where there's bridges, and, you know, I guess, has any thought to help fund any of that, or how does that work?
So, yes, sir. The transportation component of an impact fee demands its own study, and if council is so inclined, we will likely be coming back to you with a transportation impact fee study. But that's going to demand its own study that's going to say, well, we're going to identify these 10 projects, these 10 projects are going to cost X, we would need to then levy a transportation impact fee that would be in addition to this particular impact fee to address roads.
So, one minute.
This is just the start of it.
What is it, okay, explain, this impact fee is only limited to those projects?
Those four categories.
So, what happens when those projects are paid for?
The fee's got a sunset. The fee has a sunset. Yes, sir. It has a seven-year sunset.
Seven years, okay.
Yes, sir. It's a seven-year sunset. And it could be, it could be re, it could be, we'd have to do a new study, council then would have to do that, and we'd be having this conversation again at the end of that time.
Well, we might know more then, so we wouldn't be asking.
Yes, sir.
Not exactly how it's worded. I lost my train of thought.
Okay, so, well, sorry to interrupt you, but, okay, so, I guess council has not elected to move forward with the transportation?
Council has not elected to move forward with the transportation. We were going through this one first, and then the transportation one, we'd begin that process. I mean, the study, this particular study itself took five, six months at least to go through all the analysis that it went through, and it was exhaustive analysis.
That's where my train of thought was going. As it applies to transportation, I know it doesn't affect this impact fee, but since we're there, we're talking about it, how can we apply a transportation impact fee when, gosh, I don't even remember the last time we've had a project that really affected a city road, because everything around us is a county or state road still, so we don't have a lot of control. And as we take comments on a regular basis, I mean, we get verbal beatings in here on things we cannot control.
The two roads mentioned today, Abner Creek and...
Abner Creek and Broughton and Clonan are city, county, and state roads. Yes, excuse me, county and state roads.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Lavender, right off the top of my head, how that particular impact fee could be used on roads not owned by the municipality. However, I...
As we take a project on, the roads inside the development will be dedicated and maintained by the city, but those improvements are paid for by the developer.
Yes, sir.
So, we're not, we just get them to a city standard and then hand them over for maintenance, which is not going to be included in the transportation impact fee.
That's right.
We're looking at outside development.
We're looking at outside roads. Now, I do think that we could probably come up with a list.
It'd be interesting to see how, as that project, you know, goes forward, to see how that flies, but it's frustrating nonetheless to see all these developments come forward, and we can't put anything towards roads because they're not our roads. Paul, she says, yes?
No, no, I'm, you know, well, I'm more interested in the ones that are in the city currently as opposed to the ones that are out. Even, I'd grant, they need lots of work, but we can barely afford our own ones.
I'm interested in anything that's going to increase my taxes.
Yeah, well, this will not. The purpose of impact fee in particular is to mitigate that particular demand on ad valorem taxes.
You can build another house and still not have...
Yes.
Because you're not adding a family to the...
Yes, this is, this is a fee. It is not tied to your property. It is a one-time fee for the new permit.
All right. We ready? You ready, Mr. Chairman?
I got a question. All right. Please come forward.
I always say there's no dumb questions. I'm Brett Jones, I live in Woodruff. Anyway, I guess you're supposed to say that. So, is this for strictly new development, not renovation?
So, the question on that is a valid question. There is a, no, if there is an increase in square footage on a commercial development, if you're expanding the footprint, that will be part of the analysis for the fee. But through the ordinance, if you'll notice, if you've not read the ordinance, there is an appeal process where if the fee is unjustly levied, or there's an error in it, we have the ability to do that. But to answer your question, if you're renovating a structure and the footprint's the same, the impact is made. If there's a major change of use, so for instance, I would argue that a residential lot on point set that goes to commercial, that is a change of use that would drive an impact fee for that change of use. Yes, sir.
But that only applies to commercial.
Commercial.
It does not apply to an existing residential...
It does not apply to...
I mean, so, if somebody took a building, and it was vacant, it'd been vacant for 20 years, and they put a restaurant in there, they would have to pay $1,000 per, or...
Per thousand.
$3,000 per thousand square feet.
Yes, sir. And the reason being, just like we do anything else, we've got a, building permits only sit good for six months, or a year. We allow them for a year, you've got to call, so there comes a kind of a statute of limitations where just because it sat vacant doesn't excuse it from the fee itself.
What are you going to classify, what are you, institutional? What would be institutional in the city?
We're getting out of control, Mr. Chairman.
So, you said no, right? So, here's what I want to know.
Schools aren't under jurisdiction of city agreement building codes.
What?
Schools, public schools are not under jurisdiction of Greer building codes. They go through OSF. So, what would be institutional?
City buildings.
The city could pay itself? Hospital?
Yeah.
Well, we do anyway. I mean, we pay our own building fees, we do all, we pay our own stormwater.
Museums, possibly post office. We're working through taking the ordinance and taking all of the uses and dividing them into those four categories. That's what we're working on right now in anticipation.
$10,000 square foot. All right, Mr. Jones?
Go ahead.
I think he answered. Anyway, so, my question originally pertains to spinning Jenny, that's $10,000 square foot. We've got another project on the board for the Messer facility, which is about $50,000 to $55,000 square foot.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
A lot of money.
So...
For your permits now. That answer your question?
All right.
You ready, Mr. Chairman?
Commission, comments, questions, motions?
I moved it when you recommended council approve this, I mean, council adopt this.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Approved. Motion to approve.
No.
Mr. Osorno?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Motion passes, contact city staff for next steps. I had a question for him down here, but...
At this time, we will open up the business meeting for RZ 24-10. Staff, will you provide your analysis and recommendation?
This is actually for RZ 24-09. The address is 711 North Main.
Did I skip it? I'm sorry.
Okay. The existing zoning is suburban neighborhood, and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Here's the aerial, here's the zoning map again, here's the future land use, here are the existing conditions. Once again, the request is to rezone to traditional...
Once again, the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Uh, the surrounding zoning and land uses are mostly residential and staff recommends approval.
Alright, commission, any questions, the staff, applicant?
App, applicant.
Comments?
On the board, sir?
Okay, how many acres is this thing?
Point three four.
Okay, oh, that pretty much answers the rest of my questions.
And you wanna put two houses?
That, that's correct, as I stated earlier, um, yeah, I just wanna compliment and thank the staff again, but we do wanna just put two Charleston-style houses, the, the width of the house, each house is twenty-five feet, length is fifty-five feet. We can meet all the setbacks that we have talked about with the staff, uh, on the, if we're granted the change.
Comments, questions, motions?
I move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Oserno?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Alright, thank you all.
Motion passes, please contact staff for next steps. This time, we will now open up RZ twenty-four dash ten.
This is RZ twenty-four dash ten, this is for the five parcels at Brockman McClyman. Um, the existing zoning is rural residential and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Here's the aerial, here's the zoning map, here's the future land use, um, here are the existing conditions. Once again, the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood, there's a variety of surrounding land uses, staff recommends approval.
Alright, applicant still here? Alright, I guess you've heard obviously a lot of comments and stuff from the, from the staff and, or not staff, but from the audience as far as traffic and stuff like that. Um, I know you mentioned that you haven't done a traffic study yet, so I know our regulations require, I guess, based on the density and the number of trips this project would generate, a traffic study will be required. What are those mitigation requirements? We don't know until they do it, so, um, trying to think of any other questions that the audience may have had that we can ask on behalf of them.
Is, is your plan, is the plan to put mostly townhomes or mostly?
About fifty-fifty.
About fifty-fifty. Do you have, I, I'm assuming you have a, have a, an idea of units per acre?
Yeah, it'll be likely between six and seven units per acre. And the reason we're doing traditional neighborhood is, it's the only one less than ten thousand square foot lots that we can go to, so kind of, we originally looked at doing a DRD, we were asked to go traditional neighborhood.
We know why. I know, obviously, the pe- piece across the street was last month. I know a good bit of that concern from commission's standpoint, uh, was the density. Um, do we know, what is that neighborhood to the, I guess, west of us, this property?
Um, that's Overton.
Overton, I mean, just, I know you, do we know the density of that? Is that the four units per acre, is that, I know we mentioned earlier, kind of the surrounding area? Is it around the four acres, four units per acre?
Um, Overton, I, it was zoned, um, R seven five, so those were seventy-five hundred square foot lots. I'm not certain the exact density.
So pretty much, if not tighter.
The minimum lot square footage is, what, four thousand for detached and two thousand for?
What is, I have a question.
I didn't love, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I had a question for staff, what, what does trigger the, the city taking over those roads? What, what, at what point, cause I know Greer is growing and we're starting to annex a lot out there, especially around Brockman and McClyman, um, as you'll see, there's unzones Park Brook County that we typically will annex into the city and stuff. What, what triggers, what triggers the city to take over that road or take, take, uh, ownership of that road? Or is there anything that?
So both of those roads are DOT, so in terms of ownership, we won't be taking ownership back from the state.
Or main, maintenance, maintain.
For maintenance, it's still the state for maintenance.
Okay. So as, as Greer grows outside of the City of Greer, we don't, we don't take over?
Right, like, when we annex a property, um, we'll kind of adopt the adjacent roadways, um, for police response or, uh, fire, but not necessarily for maintenance if it's by the state. Um, it's different if it's the county, we take ownership at that point, but.
So I mean, I guess to the point in time, if we rezone this property and the deal falls away, we've resigned the property for another developer as well.
Yes.
So it's not, you know.
It's, it's currently zoned as, what, rural, what was it currently zoned?
Rural residential.
Which means, what's the density in rural residential?
Twenty thousand square foot lots.
Right, yeah.
So.
Uh, one point five.
One point five.
Per acre?
Okay.
But it is also located between a townhome community and Clarius Park Industrial Park.
Yeah.
So it is adjacent to an industrial facility, so staff does feel like this zoning serves as a transition between very intense and more suburban.
I have a question for Ms. Harvey, you said you spoke, you're at seven eighty and you speak for everyone from, uh, eighty-four on down? Gotcha. Yeah, super familiar with that area, I grew up over there, so that rock quarry that you're talking about is practically in my backyard, so, well, my parents' backyard, so, uh, yeah, very familiar with that intersection. Just for everyone's, uh, clarity, there will be a traffic study required by DOT, so, um, they've been mentioning the roads themselves and those are state roads. Um, we wish we could do something about those roads, cause we drive them too, but ultimately it comes down to the state to maintain those roads and unfortunately we don't have enough pool to go down there and make them come up here and pave them and maintain them like we'd like to see them done. Um, I guess for, for me, um, the request to match what's around there is consistent with what we see already and, um, to me, uh, the property rights of the owner should take precedence. Um, and I think if the property owners are in agreement of it, it's not outside of, um, the scope of what's there already. Um, I think I've made my decision, but, um, just wanted to point that out to, to council that the owners are in agreement, we're not, the issue with the other one was, it was just too much. It, it left too much on the table for them, so this one is definitely more of a transitional, um, it's right in line with everything else, so.
I'm gonna support and I'm gonna agree and I'm gonna vote in favor, but I don't love that zoning. But I didn't love it last week either, so I guess I'm never gonna love it, or last month, anyway.
Y'all are in, y'all are in the heartness right now, actively in the heartness?
No, we are not, we're just using the same planner, um.
Gotcha, that's right, okay.
Comments, questions, motions?
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Lamb, okay. Uh, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Oserno?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Um, and I will just say, um, planning commission makes their recommendation to council and this will be going for first reading next Tuesday at six thirty PM, um, on the twenty-fourth. So if anyone, it sounded like some people had questions on the decision and the next steps, and so that is the next step.
This is approval of the zoning of the project.
Correct.
Yes.
The project is what we're.
This is a recommendation of approval.
Recommendation for rezoning.
All, all the decisions are made at, at council, we are merely an advisory committee. Um, so those, if, if you want your voices truly heard, please, please be at city council.
Alright.
They're the ones that are paid to hear you.
Alright, motion passes, contact staff, planning staff for further steps. This time, we will open up the business meeting for RZ twenty-four dash eleven.
Yes, this is RZ twenty-four dash eleven, the address is one zero seven Cannon.
Alright, excuse me, hey. Excuse me, do you mind leaving quietly?
Heather, hang on a second, maybe you wanna start over. Please.
And then there were three. Fox News didn't wanna stay.
Y'all need extra credit back there, I guess.
Alright, well, let's start over, this is RZ twenty-four dash eleven, the address is one zero seven Cannon Street. The existing zoning is commercial corridor and the request is to rezone to Greer Station downtown. Uh, here's the aerial, here's the zoning map, here's the future land use, here are the existing conditions. Once again, the request is to rezone to Greer Station downtown, um, there's a range of uses around and staff recommend approval.
I assume this recommendation for zoning is because of the outdoor entertainment aspect of it, or?
Um, so it's primarily the reduction in setbacks and the parking requirement.
And it's the only thing left.
So it currently has a parking requirement for?
Commercial corridor would, uh, Greer Station, so everything around it does not. Except for apartments. Oh.
Except for what?
Apartments, multifamily does have one. One space per unit. Per unit downtown.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, not directly at this one, but in general, and I wish the city manager had hung around, cause he's, he'd been a better. I was at a city council meeting a while back and it turns out the City of Greer does not have a noise ordinance. Any progress being made on that? You don't, that's why I wanted to ask the city manager.
I, I am not aware of any, I certainly passed along concerns from residents to city council members, um, but I'm not aware of anything under consideration at this time.
I thought some of the zoning districts allow for outdoor entertainment not beyond a certain timeframe. Did I make that up?
Maybe the old zoning ordinance, it's not in the UDO. Yeah, but the city noise ordinance, it, it, we do have one, but it doesn't list a specific decibel and it's very hard to enforce due to that.
As in impossible.
I will say, it does seem to match the, the feel of downtown and what the other establishments in that area. It does seem to be an appropriate, uh, use for that, um, that piece of land.
Motion to approve.
Second. Good, that's something I got.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Oserno?
Yes.
Mr. Lavender?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Motion passes, please contact the staff for next steps. Tickets were easier back then. Alright, um, other business, planning and staff, planning and zoning report.
Not on our end, but we're happy to answer questions.
We didn't get a, we need, still need an email about some training videos. Or, you know, are you gonna be fussing at us and we ain't got here?
We'll let you know in December.
November.
Alright.
No training this year.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Ashley Holiday.